Wednesday, October 7th, the time is 7:00 PM. Allow me to write the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll open it up for visitor comments. If you have a comment, please raise your hand.
I do not see any visitor comments.
Okay. All right, is everybody okay with me just doing a sort of a roll call, just doing a census tonight? I want to speed through this meeting, my back has been out and sore, so. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I will come back to it, but tonight we'll do a aye or nay. Okay, ordinance, final reading, ordinance number 3256, an ordinance to amend the city of St. Helens comprehensive plan map for certain property from the suburban residential public land designation with a general commercial designation in the zoning district map from the moderate residential R7 to public land zone to a mixed use zone.
Move we approve ordinance number 3256?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance 3256, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, did I say aye?
Yeah, Councilor Kopez, aye, okay. All right, motion passes, I don't see Council President Morton yet. Okay, resolution 1900, a resolution determining that nuisance exists upon property located at 234 North 16th Street within the city of St. Helens and directing that notice to abate the nuisance be posted on said premises.
Move we approve resolution 1900 as read?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1900 as read, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 All right, approve and authorize for signature, street vacation petition for portions of South Second Street for agreement with Timmy Sue Hall for Police Department Administrative Service Assistant, five memorandum to of understanding and maintenance agreement with Oregon Made Creative Foundation and six contract payments.
Move we approve and authorize for signature items three, four, five, and six as read?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve items three through six as read, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, seven planning commission minutes dated August 11th, 2020, eight parks and trails commission minutes dated August 10th, 2020, and nine library board minutes dated August 10th, 2020.
Move consent agenda number seven, eight, and nine?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda seven, eight, and nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did see an aye from you too, Kopez, right?
Yep, he had an aye.
Yeah. Consent agenda for approval, ten, work session, executive session, public hearing, and regular session minutes dated September 2nd and 16th, 2020. And eleven, amendment to police sergeant job description, twelve, request for proposal for exclusive towing contract, and thirteen, accounts payable bill list.
Move we approve consent agenda for approval, items 10, 11, 12, and 13?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda 10, 11, 12, and 13 as read, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, work session action items, I know we had a few of them. I think just two, Matt, did you?
Actually, actually, I only recall one, which is the COVID funds.
I think you're right, actually.
There was a second piece of that, you were gonna address the council about the ending of the workshop, I don't know if you're gonna do it here or you're doing it as part of your report, but.
Yeah, so I just want to do a correction, yes, the way the council meeting ended with Councilor Kopez mistakenly said that we were in executive session talking about the Greystone property, I didn't even know what he was talking about until after, the Greystone property is the property over the old hospital, the little lot that we have been in discussions and we've had our planning department bring it to us if there was interest from the developer and we're like, well, yeah, we didn't even know we had a little chunk over there, it's been completely out in the open and I wanted to just clarify that I thought it was, when he said executive session, that we were breaking rules there and it wasn't because it was all out in the open and we have currently had it appraised and if the person that Councilor Kopez was referring to, when they asked if it was for sale, that was correct at the time, it was not for sale, we had just, actually, the city council had approved their appraisal probably a month ago and finally got it back for our last session and we all know the dollar was 70,000 and we were questioning that and Councilor Kopez also made a comment of going up to 80,000, so. That being said, that's where we're at, we haven't put it out, but we do know the value of the property now, so. I just wanted to make that correction on earlier, if you were watching the meeting. So I thought we were breaking executive session rules, that's why I called order, but I didn't, I had no clue what property he was talking about. So always can get a clarification on anything from staff or other counselors if need be in the future. For all of us. Okay, so we did have the the one, the approval of the COVID funds. The hotspots was one of the hottest items on there, I thought, was getting some more hotspots available to the citizens, but they all, that looked like a good dispersment of the revenue and we have to spend it by December and any discussion on that?
No, I think it's an awesome idea, it would be a shame to let any of that money go when the community needs it so badly.
The maybe expanding the number of legally attainable hotspots through the library's procurement system that was being looked into, so we could get more than was, you know, it's a mess, it's the legality of what you can get and we're trying to straighten that out, but no, we should get as much as that as we can.
Okay, well, would somebody like?
Does contributing to the food bank, is that, is that legal to do?
It is.
The city did donate $5,000 initially on top of another, I believe it was $10,000 that was in the original dispersment when we first did COVID funds, so we have, the city has donated to the food bank.
And as a side note, I actually went and had a conversation at the senior center last week out of concern because they don't ever complain, they just suffer in silence and do their work and she said, actually, things have smoothed up really well for them, she said she wouldn't speak specifically to the food bank, but she goes, things have been way better since they got the attention they needed and they haven't had any supply problems or cost problems or procurement problems in recent weeks, so just, that's the senior center update and they get some, a lot of their food through the food bank.
Right, good, good deal, so Council President Morton, I see you joined us and just want to bring you up to speed, we're already down to work session action items, I'm gonna be doing my report here shortly and you will be following, so just want to give you a heads up, Council President Morton. Well, right now, we're talking about the COVID response money that we are dispersing, that was picked up from earlier, this their work session.
Thank you, I had a hard time getting on to, onto the site, I was gonna go out, I went out and got my cellphone to call Matt and by the time I got back, I'm on, I'm in, sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem, it's frustrating sometimes, I, my computer kicked me off three times in one day. It kicked me off, so, all right, so I just think we need somebody to make a motion to spend the COVID money as staff.
I think to make a motion to to allocate the money as per staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to disperse the rest of the COVID money as staff has recommended, all in favor?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Okay, so now we're, it's my report, I don't have much to report, I've actually been with a sick back for, a hurt back for over a week and a half now, I've been to the chiropractor, so I haven't been out and about as like my usual self. You know, the city's still moving forward, if you had the opportunity to listen to our administrators' report, there was a lot in there and a lot of things were left out, I know that we have a lot of collaboration going, what I witnessed earlier in our work session, just with CSAT and the swap meeting that we had with SCAPUs and Port and Commissioners and and that's still moving forward, we are, we are moving forward in a positive way and it's not why, it's a we and and we're getting that and we know we can do a lot more than any one agency can do, so we've got a really good team put together, we got Paul Fulwell and Doug Hayes kind of leading the charge, but Paul Fulwell really kind of leading the charge on the advertisement of of our and it's really promising, so I just want to report on that, if you did miss it earlier, very encouraging news for our area, the city is continuing to move the waterfront forward, you know, through grants and through other funding mechanisms we're actually in the process of drawing up the the streets and then we'll do a little bit of public outreach on that and be interesting to see what the team comes up with, so. That's all I have to report on, like I said, I haven't been out and about very much, so. Council President Morton?
Oh, well, get well soon, Mayor, we miss you out, seeing you out on the, in the city and about on the streets and just miss seeing you, I always like to see that black pickup go by with a little wave and I've missed that a bit. Talking about, talking about we and talking about people involved in moving the city forward, I like to take my hats off to the volunteers that we have, I mean, we have so many committed volunteers and I wanted to talk specifically about the Saul people who had a cleanup down on Dalton Lake, September 26th and what they do is they they pick up any kind of trash or whatever, to keep the trails clear, you know, pull out any invasive species that are are taking over and they had, September 26th, they had a cleanup day down at Dalton Lake Nature Preserve and I just want to make certain that they get their acknowledgement and of dovetailing on that, we got a, the Lynn Pettit, as you know, is kind of the committee chairperson ahead of Dalton Lake Nature Preserve and a group by the name of CREST, an acronym is the Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force and it's headed by Jason Smith, well, they got a grant of hundreds of thousands of dollars and they were started to work with ODOT to do a salmon study on the, on Dalton Lake and with Dalton Lake utilizing flood control, doing all kinds of things that were very interesting, I got invited to walk around with Jason Smith, who's the executive director of of that group and I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of reestablishing natural water flows in Dalton Lake, doing a lot of things that will establish a better salmon habitat, so that's what they're all about and I spent, there was like, I think about 15 people who took, who took the, that workshop and it was at Dalton Lake and walked around and got to understand what their, what they would actually, what their study would entail and it's pretty exciting, so I, I said to, to Lynn, I said, make certain that the Parks Commission gets a report from Jason and, because we want to know what he's doing and whatever and I'd like to see that spill on over to the council, so the council is aware of what's going on at Dalton Lake Nature Preserve. I think it's, I think it's important, I think it's a, a good thing for any kind of restoration in a nature preserve, so I welcome that. That, to me, that was interesting, that's big news for that, that basically I have in terms of, in terms of parks and run on commission, the only thing I've heard about in the city, just kind of getting around, was the parking issues downtown, especially maybe during Halloween Town, of people wanting to go to restaurants, particularly with, there's Running Dogs and there's Dockside and Plymouth, all of those, the parking is tight and people go down there in their cars to enjoy a, enjoy a meal and yeah, turn around and and leave because they, either that or walk a long ways, park up on Knott Hill or park somewhere else, so there is some, there, there, if we could ask staff to take a look at possibly obtaining any kind of parking, maybe possibly at the end of First Street or in there somewhere, I would, I'd like to see that happen, if we could, anyway, it's my, kind of my recommendation that we look at possibly fulfilling temporarily until our development kicks in some parking spots in that, in in that area. Other than that, I'm looking forward to interviews for the Public Works Director and that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. You know it's bad when I haven't been out fishing in over two weeks, the back was getting better and then it got worse again, so. Not good, Councilor Locke?
So a couple of things, to piggyback on Doug's parking, it's been years ago now, I suggested to the council that maybe we look at Second, Third, and Fourth Street for parking for Old Town because those, all three of those streets have a lot of parking if it was paved and striped and I know part of it, there's a few trees that have been planted over the years and there's only gonna be maybe more trees and once a tree's in there, it's really hard to get rid of it, so it's gonna foul everything up, but there's a lot of parking on those three streets between Columbia Boulevard and St. Helen's Street that could be utilized for Old Town, so just to add on for the parking. And other than that, the only thing is, is just for John, are we still moving forward with restructuring our building permit process?
Yes, we are, yeah, there's the electronic building permits is just coming online here, our staff has been going training most of six months, I think, and there's, there was a data component of getting all of that historical information online and that's happened, so the answer is yes, there's some moving parts to streamline, we're working on the building inspector job description to get that person on board, the school is with their bond project is really interested in the city having resources to be more responsive this time around when they do a major project and.
All I know, I've heard, I don't know, I'm sure, Mayor, you've heard this too, that the contractors out there just can't believe how long it takes to get a permit through around here.
I got my, I got my earful as well with 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 several and the whole idea, I just, you know, basically, I said that some things are unacceptable and especially when you hear that it's sitting on someone's desk and and they didn't call back and it's been on their desk for weeks and we're here as a team and I, I think that if it sits on someone's desk, it's up to everyone to get together and say, hey, move that along, whether that person's out on vacation or whatever, but it, when it sits on people's desk, that isn't a valid excuse for for not expediting a permit and we, we've been talking about expediting permits for I don't know how long.
Years.
Quite, yes, well, whatever, so I concur, I concur.
I, I've been harping the longest at it because you know, and it's even been discussed that builders would love to be able to even buy an option if they was available where they could have it expediated instead of waiting two months for a building permit, sometimes there has been three months, but two months. And yeah, and I thought, I know it has to go through the processes, but I know Jacob has to look at them first, but seems like we could just streamline these a little bit differently, get them copied, get them out the door and, you know, get them on everybody's desk with a copy instead of just one copy going from desk to desk. I'm not trying to delegate or, I mean, not delegate.
No, I mean, every project has its own little story, wouldn't you?
Not trying to micromanage, but there's there's some issue in their building department that need to be a little bit fast, so not trying to micromanage, if you have three counselors hearing it, I don't know about the other two. Jenny?
Yeah, we heard, I mean, I hear it too, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's out there, it's not the first time we've had this conversation.
Well, I know.
And when you, when I pick it up and take it to ground to see where it's, where it's stopped, stopped up at, it's not always the same thing and oftentimes it's back on them to resupply something that they haven't, so.
I will agree with you, it's not always one person's desk, it could be a number, it could be Jacob, it could be Sue, it could be Michael, it could be those three.
John?
Process problem.
In the process of all of this, how much is electronic and how much is paper? I mean, is, does, paper sits on people's desks, but are we talking about electronic messaging and and communication? Are we talking about like through the computer or are we talking about like real paper? I mean, what, what does this sitting on their desk mean? And to me, that means that you don't return a phone call or it's on, it's in the voicemail for four or five days, is that what we're, who do we?
No, that's, that's the nature of it, I think sometimes it's a land use issue where it can't move forward unless it has something, sometimes it's a technical issue where it needs engineering that wasn't supplied and it's back on them to supply it before they can complete their review and move it through the process, every, it brings just a little bit different on the, where it's at and and we're striving to do it better, but.
Well, Jenny, Jenny, if we'll, we'll probably, if I continue to get calls, I will continually to bring it up because I can't get calls from people and say something to them that I don't know anything about other than, yes, I'll bring it up and I'll, I'll do that on a report, so it is gonna be a conversation that will probably be going on and on, I just hope it gets more efficient and more effective for our builders and our citizens, I, 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 I think that that's important and it's gotta be user friendly for our staff as well, staff has got to feel good about what they do, being thorough.
Send those concerns my way and we'll try to figure out where it, where it's at and what we can do to move it forward.
Well, I think electronically, it's gonna be very cool because they'll be able to actually type in their comment immediately to that file and that person will see there's been activity on it, I think that electronic would be very, very cool, probably a very faster process where if there was any questions or, you know, where they can get it to that builder who can call his engineer and say, hey, this guy's asking me about this, can you call him because I don't speak engineering?
And I will say that having Christina doing, being the Community Development Assistant, adding her into the team has really been a real benefit, she's created a lot of capacity to move things along, keep people organized and the communication between staff is, is pretty good.
Remember that this, a lot of paper handling, especially when you're going over prints and stuff, they're not electronic, the communication electronics, whatever it is, but there's just real paper, you've got to go over inch by inch on some of those sheets of paper and if there's one detail on a big sheet, I mean, our layout for handling building permits and paper and drawings is not the most ideal either.
Yeah, we, I mean, our building official, Mike, Mike is very tech savvy and he's ready to go electronic to electronic plans and Sue also can, is capable of reviews electronically, but our, you know, the rest of the world isn't quite there yet on the other side, even submitting some of this, most, most contractors are still paper in hand.
Yeah. It's a mixed bag and it, it, some of it is just visual inability for somebody to go over a sheet of paper and pick off the problems.
Yeah, there's a tactile component to it, to touch it.
All I have to say is, he started this. What else can I report?
That's it.
All right, let's go to Councilor Carlson.
In the past, we've talked about, I mean, I hadn't planned on reporting on this, but since you opened the can of worms, Keith, we had talked about having you and I sit down with a couple of the folks that have done a lot of development and maybe with the staff to come up with some like known hiccups and known speed bumps that maybe there's some input that we can, we can do better on, the thing I'm getting feedback in the community is we are our best self when we include our community in the process, people really enjoy us, the transparence when we had a stat, when we have open houses and we have that, we can't do stuff up close and personal, but there's no reason why we can't have workshops via Zoom, people want to be part of the process and I think that we need to look at that, I'm welcome, open to do that, Keith and I both volunteered to do that, to do some fact finding and just get some more information and make them part of the process, it's like, it doesn't seem like this he said, he said is working, so if we're not all at the same table, we're never gonna fix those speed bumps that are catching people up and just kind of in that same vein, I know we talked earlier about the grants for the Parks Department and getting the Parks equipment and I'm not sure how that process goes. I get feedback in the community about how we spend our money and people really enjoy being part of that process and I would hope that there would be an opportunity for, if we're talking about inclusive play equipment, that we involve people that would use that in our community as part of the selection process. There's just, I get phone calls from people in wheelchairs and from people with little Down's Kids, little boys and girls that with special needs, that they know what is important and they know what they want and it's like, they might feel empowered and feel like their government hears them, I know that we have experts and the people that sell stuff is experts, but our citizens want to feel heard and I think this COVID and this isolation is a real handy way to govern in a box and I think we just could do better at finding ways to involve citizens in our processes because we're all, you know, government savvy, but there's a lot of people in our community that feel left out of the process and don't feel supported, you know, and just to follow up on what Doug said about volunteers, for all the people that are working so hard trying to have a smiley face and make money down there at the Halloween Town, be their business owners or their shopkeepers or the volunteers or people selling Be their business owners or their shopkeepers or the volunteers or people selling caramel corn. Thank you for having a smiley face and for representing our city in a, in a pleasant way. Um, my heart goes out to you. I, because of my medical history, I can't be out there helping you this year, but I really have gone down and checked it out. And I just appreciate all your hard work and you're representing this community proud and I appreciate all your work. That's all I have.
Thanks Jenny, that was nice. Thank you. And I got a follow up for you on the, all abilities. Um, I was talking with Sue about that not too long ago. And the idea is to get like, cause there's so many, uh, different pieces you can buy. Was to get the general dollar amount which they have now. And we're probably going to add some to that. It'll probably be like forty-five to fifty thousand and they're going to pick like five different. And go through parks and public outreach to kind of show, you know, sometimes you can even eliminate a chunk off one and add another one. That's how multifaceted these are. Cause I, I guess it just goes on and on when you start looking into all these all ability playgrounds.
But you know, from being a, a parent, that when you have a kid that has a barrier to learning or a barrier to inclusion. When you find a way to break that down with the school or with the teacher and all the kids just come running through because it works for so many. You feel this tremendous sense of accomplishment. And I think if there's ways that we can include our community. And those kinds of things and let them be part, let them be heroes in our government and let them help us find the right solution that works for everyone.
Yeah, cause I went to Sue frustrated going, why did we have to wait for this dollar amount? Why can't we just go ahead and, you know?
Right.
So hard to pick, you know, there are so many different, uh, pieces.
Yeah, you don't want to get swept away by a salesman.
Yeah.
Yeah, internally regarding that issue and that the public involvement component or desire. Rather than approaching people with a blank slate, as the mayor mentioned, having various alternatives of. Different types of configurations and then go to the public for comment and see, you know, what, what about each of them they like.
That's just my push for, for anybody that, you know, I, we get a stipend, anybody that draws a paycheck that comes from the taxpayer should be looking for ways to include the taxpayer.
And the nice thing about that is we also have budget for other playground equipment as well. So it'll all be brand new down there.
Right. And it's, it's all going to be a better, better way of life and a healthier, more inclusive community, which is what we all want.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay.
Uh, Councilor Lopez?
I have three things. Uh, first we'll get to the art and cultural committee. We have an appointment that the, uh, committee would like the council to continue. Uh, Jenny Rankin, who is sure, would like to serve another term. She was appointed in six, five, nineteen. So that is one thing I would appreciate if we would reappoint her.
You make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
What was, what was her name?
Jenny, G E N N A, Rankin, R E I N K I N G.
Okay, so Jenny Rankin to the Arts and Cultural Commission, correct. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, she's in.
The, um, Art and Cultural Commission is getting geared up, if you would. Uh, we're kind of on a sabbatical because we were going to work with Rachel on understanding the rules of how we're supposed to operate. So that's an ongoing situation.
Well, hey, Steve, I got a question. And you said that, uh, you're, you're, is her term up now if she was appointed in, in six, five? Nineteen?
Hard nineteen.
Well, her term would be.
But it's, it's almost up.
Almost.
It's almost up. Okay.
In June.
Next thing which kind of goes into what you and Jenny were talking about helping people with handicap. We were talking about putting in a kayak launching facility, uh, down at Gray Cliffs. And I asked Sue Nelson to find out all the permits that we have to go through to try to do that. And mainly just build a, uh, file about what kind of things we have to do to get something in like that. That would also include handicap. Even on the waters, you know, is permit crazy? That's the second thing. The third thing is I've gotten, as I'm sure many of you have, a lot of people, uh, really upset with Halloween town. For any number of reasons and there's a lot of reasons. And one person suggested that we have an audit so everybody in town knows how much money has been spent. Uh, in the last year and have it done by an outside firm. And the, the feeling I get is people don't trust what's been going on. And this pandemic is pushing people to the edge. So I'd entertain a mo- uh, motion to have an outside, uh, firm do an audit. Of everything that's going into Halloween town, including how much time our facilities people put in. Uh, how well our vendors go. But have it done by outside firm because right now there's a lot of anger in the woodwork out here.
Well, I just got to say this, that we've had this discussion a number of times and. The biggest misconception, and you could ask this of the people who are really furious. Do they realize it's not their tax dollars at all that are being spent on this?
That isn't there, that right now, that has not been a big, uh, part of the discussion.
That is one of the biggest boiling points of this. They think that we're overcharging, that we're trying to make profiteering off of the COVID. And the bottom line is we only have two hundred and fifty people that can come in at once and follow. Um, we do do audits. We get audited every year by the state and, um, it's all legit.
Well, no, no one's discussing that. They weren't, they want a third party just to actually know. I mean, right now we're into a high grade mistrust. And, and it's the only way I can see to get a clear view that everybody will have to admit to.
Hold on.
They don't admit to the state's accuracy in an audit. That's what's on the street.
So Steve, we, we're not disagreeing. We're not, we're not disagreeing. We're on the same page. We talked about an audit.
Yeah, I know.
We all agree. And then COVID happened.
Yeah, I know. And that, that, that's what got everybody screwed up.
No, COVID happened and so we don't have a normal way of auditing what it would actually really be. Cause we wanted to know the exact figures and now we have this skewed year. It's been all screwed up with thirteen nights to the whole works.
Yeah, and that's what we're fighting.
Yeah, the thing about, one of the things about audit is it's all monetary. And, uh, the thing about Halloween town is that it's a spirit and it's a fun-loving activity. And how do you measure, how does someone audit the good things that come out of a festive event? I mean, people feel good. How do you audit that? Is there a price that you got to put on that? That's hard to, that's hard to do because there's a lot of good feelings and a lot of good things that are coming out of Halloween town. One of the most effective, I think, is the control that if we have over the two hundred and fifty people. That are allowed in a contained area. And I strongly feel that if we wouldn't have that, if no one was around. We'd have thousands of people downtown milling around with no control. And so at least there's an element of control with Halloween town. I hope that, I hope you say some of those things that to some of the individuals who are thinking that, that it's such a waste. Um, it could be chaos down there. We all know that because people, it's people from the outside that are visiting Halloween town. Ninety percent, I asked Tina, I says, how many people are city people and how many people are outside? She says ninety percent from the outside and that, and they, we ought to have, we've got to have elements of control. With, and if we just say, okay, there's no Halloween town, well, they're going to be here anyway. Uh, it's the way I see it. It's, uh, so anyway, there are, there are different answers of just saying that it's all financial. Uh, but, and I do agree with an audit, Steve. I, I, uh, not that I'm, not that I'm against that. But there's other things that we've got to measure as well. It just can't be all about the monetary gain that is, uh, being obtained. Uh, or how much the, how much we have spent, uh, or has been spent. Uh, not we as taxpayers, uh, in, in the city, but how much the tourism, uh, committee, that group has spent. So anyway, uh, I just thought I would throw that in.
You're right. The, the one problem that you just described is the people who are enjoying it are from out of town. The people complaining are in town.
Yes, you're right.
That, that's, you're between the devil and the deep blue sea. And the only way is how can we get transparency into this action? Oh, we've got to somehow figure out how to do, and one suggestion was an audit.
Yeah, and you sat in on the last meeting about, uh, it was almost a year ago when we talked about the RFP and also the audit for this year. COVID happened. You, we're ready to go forward with that.
Yeah, well, the, as I say, this last couple, this last week or actually week and a half, the amount of, uh, comments that I've gotten. I'm going to be nice and call them comments is really going to a high peak. That's what I'm, you know, raising in my hand that we've got a lot of disgruntled. Citizens out here and we've got to somehow. Open it up so everybody understands what's going on.
Sure, absolutely. Councilor Lopez, you have?
I have one comment, um, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had people log on late, maybe missed the public comment. I just wanted to make sure if there was.
Yeah, I can, uh, I can grab it at the end here. Hey, um, Councilor Lopez, are you, is that anything else to report?
That's it.
Okay. Hey, on a lighter note, I agree with your Gray Cliff Parks, uh, kayak launch. And, uh, I also would like to see maybe a sportier kayak launch where you launch from the top of Gray Cliff Park. And you don't even have to paddle and it'll shoot you over to the island.
Well, the good part about that, it's easy to get in to the kayak when it's on dry ground if you're a handicap. So most of the handicap people I know would love that.
Yeah, we just make that, you know, it's about a two hundred foot drop right there. I think you'd get enough momentum just to kind of slide down it and all the way over to Sand Island.
Yeah. But we've seen idiots with their little things jumping off waterfalls in the rock strewn mountain.
Yeah. Hey, it might bring some tourism, something to think about, gentlemen.
If we put our zip line in, we could just have a quick release on the zip line.
Yes, I, 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 I know most everybody up there on that Gray Cliff area and they're shaking their head if they're watching this and they're. Happy with me right now. Hey, uh, another point, uh, up there on that Gray Cliff, um, have we ever thought about a railing up there? Keith, I know you and I have talked about it, uh, a couple of months ago, but, um, it is very steep and there's that asphalt that's right below. I mean, even just a wire up there is something that I would like to have Public Works maybe look at. It is a little sketchy up there.
I, I've talked about this three or four times.
Yes.
The problem is, is it's all rocks. So I'm just figuring out how to attach it.
Oh, yes, you'd have, oh, you'd have to drill, drill holes. Yep. Um, yeah, and it's asphalt below. It's not blackberries anymore.
Right.
Cause that's an improvement, yeah?
It's breaking bones versus ripping skin. They cook your pain.
Okay, um, all right. So I think we're, uh, down to our last item would be other business. And I think I'll let anybody if they'd like to make a comment or here to make a comment, um. Wave and Matt will see you.
We just have two visitors here.
Got it.
You see any, Matt? Okay, um, well.
You got one maybe?
Here's the map.
Oh, Jamie.
Yeah, hi. My name's Jamie Smith and I wanted to make a comment around the Halloween town. I actually sent the council a email as well. So first, not all of the locals are complaining or angry, but there are some. And I think that it would be helpful that if city council members were actually down at Halloween town. At the gates, helping with the volunteers to get that real ti- time feedback, but also to help diffuse some of the situation. We, we as volunteers, um, we're getting yelled at from those that are angry, probably the same ones that are messaging you guys. And I think to have the council down there and speaking to them and being a part of Halloween town as part of the face. And the group that voted to continue to move forward would be helpful and lend a lot to our community.
Well, thank you, Jenny. Uh, it would be, uh, you know, we, we actually, that is a paid by two, E two C to take care of that. Um, and, and I get what you're saying. Um, I have been down there in years past. A lot of times, and, uh, this is just a weird year where, where you have complaints. Um, because of the barriers. And I think you guys have got a lot of that figured out is what my understanding was in talking earlier in our work session, Jamie. And I did read your email and thank you very much. You also went on further to say how you, how much you liked Halloween town and how most people were. Really, really glad to be there and, uh, thank you for volunteering down there. Uh, I will try to make it a point to try to get down there. Uh, I cannot be there on a twelve hour shift. Uh, I fortunately, um, not just mayor, but I also own my own business and I'm a dad as well. So, and I also have a lot of other service positions as many of us do, um, whether it be Kiwanis or, or whatever organization that you're. But, uh, we get, we get what you're saying. Um, anybody else like to respond to that?
Yeah, we were, I had a, go ahead, Jenny.
I have, I mean, this is the first year I haven't been down there every single Saturday. And it's largely because of the COVID and just my own personal health that I've made that decision. Um, but I will, you know, I did talk to E two C about sneaking down for a couple of hours one Saturday, just to kind of take the temperature. I really like to look at it with my own eyes. I did actually go to six different businesses in the last week and talk to business owners. And I didn't get a single negative from any of the business owners. So the only step left for me is to actually see some of the people that are attending. I have watched the people on weekdays being super happy. I'm seeing, seeing your pictures taken down there. So, I mean, there's lots of stuff going on. Considering we're in a pandemic where I'm not seeing a lot of really unhappy people. But it's, we're doing it in a new way and it's a new way and that's going to cause heartache and heartburn. And it's like, hopefully we'll never have to do it this way again.
Well, um, you know, I want to say something about being a Kiwanian and at Kiwanis, we heard Tina, we said Tina's briefing. Uh, when she was asking for volunteers and it came up in a Kiwanis, uh, uh, discussion like, who's going to volunteer? Well, we volunteer for everything. We volunteer for all these events. And now that COVID nineteen is involved with this, hey, take a look at the council members and look at our faces. And you know that a lot of us are very aged, you know, in our upper seventies, uh, and, and, uh. We're, we're, we're older and if the Kiwanis kind of thing says, you know, you know, you guys, if you're down here and if you're going to volunteer. You're really putting yourself at risk. You're putting a lot of people at risk. And that was the conversation at our, at our Kiwanis group. Now, I don't know how many people and what ages they were that did volunteer, but I can tell you that I've been, that many of us who are over seventy. And, and saying, hey, you know, we expect you to volunteer on, and being out in the, in the public. Uh, you know, you can put a mask on, whatever, but we're more vulnerable and we've been told that. We've been told that by our physicians. We've been told that by health authorities and, uh, the Kiwanis people advised each other. Not to be involved in that. So I'm not making excuses. I'm just saying there, I wish I could be there. I wish I could do something. But I'm advised not to. So it doesn't feel good to be saying this, but I, it's, it's, you know, because it, I feel like. Uh, if it was any other time, I would be there. So anyway, that's, that's my piece and I think Jamie should hear that. Uh, uh, and, uh, a lot of times, uh, you know, we do a lot, we do a. a lot of times, you know, we do a lot. We do a lot of volunteering. We're places that in activities that we we show up unexpectedly. So and sometimes unwelcome. But it's it's something that we all do. I know the mayor is 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 always at things. Keith Locke has been at things. Jenny and Steve, everyone's been at these at these community activities. And I I we can't be at everything. And so I just want to tell Jamie that. Okay. Sorry, Jamie.
Well, no, I I I I just, what we can do is we can try to put out, you know, this day on our city website that, you know, that this they're not blocked off from restaurants down there. They are still able to pass through. What happens is we don't get no love from when we try to put a message out. We don't get no love from media, and we always have to do our own outreach through our Facebook site. So I guess that's what we can do is, you know, ask people to be patient, a little patient and courteous of one another, and especially the volunteers like yourself, even that are down there making making St. Holmes a welcoming place for visitors outside the area. You know, I always like to make somebody feel welcome. I do. And I'll try to make it a point to make it down there. My back's been went out actually two Saturdays ago at two o'clock, I almost hit the ground. That's the type of went out it went. And I thought it was getting better, and it's not doing better today. So excuses, but what we can do is we can maybe get Crystal King to put out a little messaging for for that. All right, Matt, do you see any other visitor comments? Okay, all right. It's good seeing you all. We'll see you in two more weeks. Until then, we are adjourned.